Could I entertain a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, hello and welcome, everyone. I never thought I'd say this so soon, but it's nice to see everybody in a room together again. Tonight is my first meeting as Chair of the Select Board, and as Chair, I hope to work towards building a greater sense of community, to promote ethical conduct, to provide transparency in our local government, and to improve communications. One part of improving communications is to dispel any misinformation that is spread through word of mouth or through social media. There are several rumor mill social media sites that are spreading misinformation that is, quite frankly, harmful to our community. One recent post that was brought to my attention was a false story about the Byfield Community Arts Center closing its doors. This could not be further from the truth. The Byfield Community Arts Center is a vibrant part of our community, and I please ask that you continue to support them. I, myself, am looking forward to a couple of events to go see there this summer, and I hope I see some of you people there. Please check out their website at byfieldcac.org for a calendar of events, and the calendar will be updated as shows are rescheduled. Okay, and at our last Select Board meeting, Jerry, did you remember you asked a question about the senior discount with the town, the town seniors, the town not contracting with the discount for our seniors? Did you remember saying that?
Not at the last one.
Okay. Well, it was mentioned last year that the town didn't have a senior citizen discount, and I just want to correct it that we do. Here's the letter that senior citizens, the purpose of this letter is to outline the senior citizen discount that will be available to qualified Town of Newbury Comcast cable service subscribers. Comcast will offer a discount of $2 off its monthly digital starter rate or that digital level of service which most closely resembles a digital starter. The discount will be provided to those subscribers age 65 or older who are heads of household and are income-eligible. Any of our seniors who would like to participate in this program, please contact Comcast to enroll. You will need to provide proof that you meet their criteria, but the town does indeed have a senior discount.
May I request? So, this senior discount is a $2 discount, and you have to be a certain limit of your income?
Yes.
So, in my opinion, that's really not a true senior discount where you're 65 and you get a discount, so.
Well, that's the criteria.
That's what was negotiated, which...
Yeah, that's what Comcast provided.
Two whole dollars. Get a cup of coffee.
That's Comcast, I know. Okay, so...
I wonder if that's standard?
It is.
No. It actually isn't. Other towns have different and better senior discounts.
That's not what we were told, but, you know what? It's Comcast. Okay, so, the next first item on the agenda is public comment. So, to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes longer with the permission of the chairperson. The Select Board will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the Chair. So, if we have any public comment, I'm going to ask you to come up and state your name, and I believe that microphone is right there in the street that you're in. Do we have any public comment?
We have a lot of them tonight.
Okay.
So, we'll make it short. We'll try and make it, what are we, I'm a loud talker?
Fifteen minutes, okay.
Okay, so, my name is Justin Laudergan. You've probably heard from me by now. I work, I live at 38 Larkin Road. I began with my wife Catherine the petition that you may or may not have seen, you've probably seen by now, opposing the Town of Newbury's proposed culvert on Larkin Road. So, I'm here tonight, along with a lot of my neighbors, to discuss our concerns, which we hope you'll hear and listen to and respond to. So, a few points I want to cover, and I'll let my neighbors do a lot of the talking, too. But the first point is, I want to reiterate that this petition has now grown to 255 citizens of the Town of Newbury, and it will continue to grow. Newbury Port News is very interested in this, and they've been corresponding with us regularly. You know, it's already made the paper. So, the first thing I want to point out is, we're being told that the bridge needs to reopen for safety reasons. That's the first piece of feedback that we keep getting told. I think primarily, the concern, from my understanding, is that the Town of Georgetown has concerns about accessing the bridge so that it can service this new development, which, of course, will benefit Georgetown's revenue base, not Newbury's, number one. So, to the safety concern, the alleged safety concern, what I say to you all is, I have learned that the cost of the culvert repair is about $250,000. My understanding, obviously, is the bridge has been closed for about 10 years. So, if this was a pressing safety concern according to the Town of Newbury, why was the culvert never repaired with our tax dollars? 250K is a rounding error for the town's operating budget. So, why wasn't it repaired? I think there's one of two choices. Either you guys, dereliction of duty, right? You didn't address an urgent safety issue. One, or two, it's not an urgent safety issue. I'll give you the benefit of the doubt that it's number two. It's not an urgent safety issue. We know it, you know it. If it were, it would have been addressed in the past decade, okay? So, this isn't an urgent safety issue, fixing this bridge. This is a like-to-have, and I would argue that it's like-to-have primarily by Georgetown. I don't understand what Newbury is thinking getting on board with this project, okay? And neither do 255 citizens who vote. So, the second piece of this is the bigger safety issue, which is that Larkin Road is 15 feet wide, 16 in places, but it's over 15 feet, okay, for a big open stretch. When this bridge was last opened over a decade ago, Larkin Road, in many places, was gravelled. I don't believe it was safe then, but now with fresh pavement, it absolutely is not safe. Period, end of story. I invite any police chief or fire department person to come down, look the mothers and fathers of Larkin Road in the eye, and tell us how it's safe to open a 16-foot wide to through traffic in 2021 with fresh pavement. It's not safe. If the bridge being open were critical safety issue, I'd like to think that the towns would have addressed it in the last decade. You haven't, because it's not, and we all know it. Opening the bridge at this point is the safety issue, cannot be opened. The last thing I want to say is, it is boggling our collective minds, the people that signed this petition, what is going on for the Town of Newbury that you are entertaining this bridge? So much so that we can't understand what's going on. The Georgetown Planning Board person who has advocated and rubber stamped this goes to bed tonight in Woburn, okay? That city is ruined. I don't want Georgetown ruined, I don't really care about Georgetown, actually. I don't want Newbury ruined. It doesn't need to be another Woburn, okay? He wants another Woburn? We don't want Woburn. So, the people involved in this in Georgetown, we don't support their agenda, and we don't want you supporting their agenda. You need to protect Newbury citizens' interests, not Georgetown's. We see no benefit to the Town of Newbury in opening this bridge. Newbury Police Officers do not need to cross the bridge into Georgetown lines, they don't have jurisdiction there, okay? Mutual reciprocity of emergency services has not existed for over a decade, it doesn't need to start now. If it did, someone would have addressed it 10 years ago, okay? It's existed as it's been for 10 years, it needs to stay as it lays. And we're not going to go away on this issue, and I'm going to stop so that my friends and peers can talk about this more. That's what I have to say, and I encourage you all to take this very seriously, because as I've stressed in my emails, we're not stopping on this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim Moran, 104 Elm Street. I'm addressing these complexes, the current plan for the town to take the town hall, tear it down, build a complex at 25 High Road. I believe it's a bad plan. The complex at 19,000 square feet would be twice the size of the new police station. The lot is too small. The cost would be 12 to 13 million dollars, based on the architect's information. The project, according to the Select Board member, is estimated to take three years. A similar plan of a complex was presented to the voters in 2018 and was voted down by 64% of the voters. Related to this is the Council on Aging, and I believe it'd be better off in a separate building. The Council on Aging voted yesterday to continue discussions regarding this matter with a larger group. The agenda that came out today is they want to revote on this a week from now. That remains to be seen. But the main issue in my mind is, I believe the complex is not a good plan, and that's my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the author that you're referring to at the beginning of your speech tonight, and in the name of transparency...
I need your name and your...
My name is Leo Rybicki, and I live at 37 Larkin Road in Byfield. Thank you. The rumor mill, I don't think, is that, and if you're going to answer the post in social media that you're citing earlier this evening, I think you should finish it. Is the Byfield Council of Aging going to have the same arrangement that it has had, 24/7, 365, as it has for the previous 15 years? Or is there a coming change in the Byfield Community Arts Center operations in general to include and/or the movement in a temporary manner or otherwise with the Council of Aging? Take over any hours there. I'd look forward to that answer. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, thanks for your consideration. I am David Mader. I live on 61 Larkin Road, along with my wife Joan, and three kids, and three dogs. I understand the zoning and the rights of the developer to build homes in the site. My business is actually commercial site selection and development for the restaurant industry, so I've heard my share of complaints and objections over the last 35 years, and if you think putting houses, trying to put a drive-in McDonald's next door to somebody. Not a lawyer, I don't know the legalities of being able to stop this development, alter it in any way, but I kind of look at it in a different way. It's more of a quality-of-life issue. We've lived on Larkin Road for over 20 years. My kid's grown up on it, and there was a time there in the beginning when that bridge was open, and kids mostly, but a lot of people find the path of least resistance and the shortest shortcut. That's where Massachusetts drivers, that's what we do. We find the shortest route possible, and that's the shortest route possible to a lot of things. So, and they come down that street pretty fast. And in the beginning, we were really worried about our kids. We didn't have a fence on the street, and so we would worry about animals walking out there, and there's a lot of deer, there's a lot of wildlife. So, I think that when it comes to quality of life, you know, our kids have grown up, they've moved on, but it's gone full circle, and this street is now loaded with young families, young kids. Many of the homes in the street have been sold to these families in the last few years, and they've only known it as a dead end, a safe place for children to play and to grow up. That looks like it's going to change, or it could possibly change, and I believe my purchased home on the street, because of, it was a dead end. And I bet you, if you ask a lot of those people if those houses get built, if they'd rather have that be a dead end or a throughway, they're going to say, I'd rather live on a dead end. So, again, I think it's a quality-of-life issue. The bridge opening will change the quality of life for everybody on the street. I feel the elected officials are elected to represent and protect the integrity of the town, which is made up of neighborhoods, and ultimately, it's made up of the people. On top of that, the past year has brought a lot of challenges, a lot of bad things because of COVID, but there's been a few good things that have come out of it. I know I stand out in front of my house, and I see people walk with dogs up and down the street, and for the first time in 20 years since I remember, people stop, they talk, they know each other. All of a sudden, it's a neighborhood. All of a sudden, people care about each other, and you see the turnout tonight. It's because people care about this neighborhood and the quality of life that goes into living there. So, we turn to the people that we elected to ask for your help. There are cost issues and wear and tear on the road, and who pays for it, and the taxpayers pay for it, and all that. There's a question of property values also. Is my property worth less on a dead end, or is it worth less if there's through traffic? I remember moving there, and they said, geez, you can hear the highway. That's not good, that's why we can't sell the house. It didn't bother me. I had central air, we'd just shut the windows, right? So, I understand the rights of the developer. He has done nothing wrong, bought a piece of property that was zoned and permitted to do what he wants to do. Maybe there's a compromise. I think through traffic for me and my family, and the other families and the little kids on the street, is an important thing to stop. I don't understand why an emergency gate couldn't be put there if he gets to go ahead to do the culvert and to do the bridge, to stop that traffic from coming through. We see it in condo developments in the back door, where you can unlock it, and emergency vehicles can get through. I don't know about the construction stuff. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer, I don't permit these things, but, again, I've seen things get so much better through the worst times that this country has faced in the last year on our street and our neighborhood. So, I'm just hoping that you guys will help us to preserve that.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Megan Rogers. I live at 75 Larkin Road with my husband Alan Rogers III. He's lived on Larkin Road his entire life, up at 53. We purchased his grandfather's home at 75. We're a direct abutter of this development, and we're the last house right before the bridge. I've got a three-year-old and a three-month-old, just taking a double stroller out on the street. I'm almost in the middle of the road, it's so narrow. And as Mr. Mader stated, we have a wonderful community. Everybody is able to get out on that street, and it's, traffic is pretty fast as it is now with a dead end. My husband remembers, when it was open, people speed and drive like crazy, cut through, late hours, and it's detrimental if it opens to this neighborhood. Both sides, both Georgetown and Newbury, we've, or Byfield, we've grown to know each other, communicate with each other often. It's a wonderful sense of community, both towns. And the issue of opening it for emergency access to this development, saying that, you know, someone inevitably may get hurt if emergency vehicles can't access from the Georgetown parish roadside, it just seems ludicrous with Byfield Fire and Emergency being right at the end of Larkin, much closer to the development, and there are residents on the other side of the bridge that are Newbury. Emergency access hasn't seemed to be a concern to get to them from Byfield Fire for 10 years. So, we're just hoping, as elected officials, you guys are our voice, and this community, along with 250-plus people, have said they don't want this, and it will truly devastate a community, both sides, two towns, and we're really hoping you guys will hear our voice and do the right thing and not allow this bridge to be open. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything different that we haven't heard yet?
I have a couple of questions.
See if I can answer them.
Excuse me?
I'll see if I can answer them. Your name and...
My name's Bernard at 40, and I own the property abutting, the Wheeler Brook, 79 Larkin Road in Byfield. And everything everybody said is true, and ditto to all that. I just have a couple of questions. Who is fixing this bridge when it gets fixed? Okay. And who issues the permit for the bridge construction around wetlands? Who issues that permit?
Well, it's going to have to go through process, so if there's a wetlands impact, it has to go to the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
If, and I'm sorry I didn't answer you about the developer, I thought you wanted a specific name. I didn't have that off the top of my mouth.
No, that's all right.
Usually, the building inspector, highway department head, would be typically involved in something like that.
Okay, but...
Also, emergency management, police and fire, being a bridge and a public access way, would also be involved in...
And where does the Army Corps of Engineers come in? Not at all?
I don't know.
I wouldn't know why...
Are you saying you don't know, or they aren't involved?
I don't know why they would be involved.
Well, let me just tell you, you know, and again, I'm no expert on any of this stuff, but my concern is, again, as I said, safety is the primary concern, but secondly is, I have the abutting property, and there's been some mention about, you know, in kind of flood events, you know, whether or not this new culvert or whatever they're putting in would be adequate to handle, you know, a heavy rain and a surge of water, and then that ends up, you know, jumping the banks onto my property, so...
Generally, stormwater calculations and things like that fall to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Really? I always thought the Army Corps of Engineers had to get involved if it's a, I mean, this isn't like a DPW project, right?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
I can't answer it for sure, but the Corps has a lot of jurisdiction up our federal waterways, and I don't know, they start at some bridge, you know, because they're doing a lot of the coastal stuff, such as the sand and the storm resilience and all the stuff that we hear about on Pom Island and Barrier Beaches. I don't know if the Corps gets up our small streams, how far they go.
The main street bridge, they were not involved.
So, there's a place that they stop, or they would be so busy in our country from stem to stern, you know?
Okay. All right, let me write that down. Is there a construction mitigation plan?
These are all questions that I think need to be answered, I guess, at the Planning Board level, or if, yeah...
Okay, but I would think that if you guys were, you know, doing due diligence, that you two boards talk to each other, right? I mean, these things aren't in a vacuum, am I right?
No, but our authorities don't usually overlap, and like the stormwater calculations, regulations, weight ratings, things like that, all fall under Planning Board, Conservation, Building Inspector, Highway Director, and Emergency Management Directors.
The Select Board has a very limited role in any of this?
I know. Like I said, I came to ask questions and get information so that I can do my due diligence, because, you know, as, you know, Megan said earlier, you know, she's an abutter as well. My other neighbor across the street's an abutter, and we have concerns about the ability of the bridge to, you know, handle...
I get it.
You know, as I was explaining to some of my neighbors, my property, it's like four-point something acres, but I'm on the Parker River as well, so I'm boarded, the Parker River's the back of my property and the side is the Wheeler Brook. And when we had that, like, seven inches of rain in a short period of time, you can't normally see that river from my back door, and it was within, like, 50 feet of my back door. I mean, we were able to take our rowboat and actually row it, like, right up almost to my house. So, and that was seven inches of rain, and we all know that the, you know, climate is changing, and, you know, weather, in fact, this month, June, is the hottest June on record so far. So, you know, we as abutters have, you know, concerns about whether or not whatever you plan to put in place, let me tell you what I think's going to happen. I think that this is a done deal, and this road is going through. So, my concern is, okay, so now that you're going to construct this bridge or culvert, and what is the difference between a culvert and a bridge?
JR?
Basically, here again, I'm not an engineer. A better question for Planning Board or someone like that, but a bridge, I would say, is a rigid structure that spans a waterway or a gap.
Yeah, what's the difference?
And a culvert is more of a pipe.
Right, and that's my concern, if we get a big surge of water, and this pipe isn't big enough.
It's probably going to be a box culvert, I think, no?
That's what I heard, a box culvert. So, what does that mean?
It's instead of a round pipe, it's going to be square, and it'll handle more water because of the square edges. And folks, I got to speak for just myself, we are all very aware of what you guys are saying to us, and we are not taking it lightly, and we are not taking an antagonistic view. We're also processing all the information at hand, and we're glad to hear from you guys tonight. So, I want everyone to know that we have not dug our heels in and made our decision.
Okay. Here's another point I just want to make, is, you know, I always thought that, like, the developer would be required to, if they're going to do the bridge, repair the bridge, then do their thing, because what happens oftentimes in these situations is the developer does his development, at the end, he goes, oh, oh, sorry, ran out of money.
Yeah, so...
So, what do you have in place to protect the Newbury from that?
So, I just want to be abundantly clear that this developer isn't going to be allowed to do any work in Newbury unless, until he has met a certain level of criteria, and...
And who sets that criteria? The Planning Board?
Yes.
Okay. And I have to assume you guys are talking, am I right?
Well, it's another elected board.
Right.
The Planning Board sent us here, so there's a lot of kicking and going on. Martha deferred to you guys.
So, when the road is going to be, when this project is ready to actually cut into our road, it will be before our board again, and it will be posted, and you will all get notice of it, and I already told Justin I'd give him a heads up when it does come on the agenda again.
That will be before the Planning Board as well, so we'll have the opportunity to attend that meeting?
That I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it'll be before the Planning Board again. I know it's going to come before us at some point. I can't tell you when.
Okay.
Because I don't know.
We're way over on public comment, so if we could just bring it in.
So, just one...
I just wanted to ask one question.
Normally, we give everyone three. We've been very generous, and there's a couple of people that would like to speak, it looks like.
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to know, is there any possibility that part of the abutter's land will be taken by eminent domain to meet new, you know, oftentimes when you replace something that's old, you have to build it to the current standards, and I want to know if that's a possibility.
I don't know that answer, but if you could just please put all these questions into an email...
Okay.
And send them to us. We'll do the best we can to answer them for you.
All righty.
I don't believe there's any taking on this at all, so...
We haven't been notified of any taking.
Yeah, I have.
Can I ask one question real quickly?
Yes.
When I, Jim, I mean, the selectman in Georgetown called me and asked me about this, and when I called, Alicia, they said it was already voted on 15. And I said, is that true? Was it voted on 15?
Yes.
Then the question now is, can we undo the vote?
You what?
So, can we undo? Because I was told it was a done deal, too. So, now I'm asking my board, can we undo the vote now that all this new evidence is on the table?
Right.
So, that's what I'm asking.
The abutters weren't notified?
Well, I guess...
You know, like, when the first developer was involved, we all got, like, registered certified mail, and then we could come out and, you know, gather information and give our feedback and all of that, but...
Thirty seconds, we got to give everyone a chance to talk.
So, like I said, if you could just put all of this together in, you know, a note, and when it does come before us again, we can bring it all back up again. But right now, we just, I don't have the information for you, and I...
Okay.
Okay?
All right, we'll be back in touch.
All right, thank you.
We won't repeat anything, right? Everyone?
Yeah.
All new tricks.
The last one, yeah.
So, I'll be brief. My name's Connor Bohm, I'm on 65 Larkin Road. I'm a new resident to the road. I've only ever known it as a dead end. My family is not. My wife, Kim, has lived there for almost 30 years now, and her father, Frank Papalo, is a state trooper there, and in his time as a state trooper, he's seen a lot of dangerous things on that road, both with the bridge being out. Back in 98, it was out for five days. They had to bring milk across, I believe, in a rowboat? I don't remember that. So, basically, he was also stationed in Puerto Rico with the Army Corps of Engineers' district supervisor, who, if you know anything about Larkin Road, there's a big flood ditch that runs behind about half of it, and they have a supervisory jurisdiction on it, so I don't know if that actually does mean that they must be notified and consulted and vote on everything that happens there. But his opinion was that no culvert, not a box and not a circular culvert, would be able to withstand the flood flows here. He said they'd already run the tests, and it clearly shown that you need a full-scale bridge, which is going to cost far too much for any development here to be feasible, and it seems it's kind of just gotten thrown off the wayside. And so, I understand that that's already been addressed, so I don't want to really weigh too much there, but to be honest, I work in real estate development as well, and I've had to stand before committees like you as well before, and I do just implore you guys to exercise any and all rights that you do have. You do have the ability, you have a moratorium on your road, five years, so that's something you guys can say. Sorry, until we are given the due diligence and ensured that this will be done in a proper, safe way, protect your citizens, do everything you can, every single thing you can, because this road has been an incredible community to me already, and I really don't want to see a change. And you have 200-plus people who are active members of the community that feel the exact same way, so...
Thank you.
Everything you can. Everything you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The board and committee reports.
Sorry, so we all got babysitters mobilized to be here. We've been petitioning, we've been meeting on the street. You mentioned at the beginning that you could extend the time, that you could take comments. If we promise to not repeat any points made, can you hear from a couple other people?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I thought, I didn't think anybody else was coming up.
Sorry. My name's Catherine Laudergan. I'm at thirty-eight Larkin Road, and the points I wanna bring up are the width of the road. We've measured in a couple spots, it's sixteen feet, and we're wondering if there are any requirements for road width in order to be a throughway, especially paved. And I also just do not understand what the benefit to Newbury of this road is, and we're all just scratching our heads, and-
Can you guys address that?
Yeah, like, what's, what is the benefit if nobody wants it?
What I can tell you, the history of this was, back in twenty-fifteen, when the road was closed, the culvert failed.
Yeah.
The road was deemed unsafe for vehicular traffic, and I'm gonna ask the chief to, if he recalls this, I don't know. The, at the time, the town did not have the means to fix the culvert. We didn't have the money, so the road was closed.
Yeah. The road was clo- it was closed.
The bridge was closed.
The bridge, I'm sorry, the bridge was closed, or the culvert, for vehicular traffic only. And along came this developer on the Georgetown side, and the only way he could create his development was to have that access reopened for public safety reasons, and he came before the Select Board then and asked if they paid for the culvert, if we would reopen the road back in twenty-six, sixteen, twenty-sixteen, was it?
Fifty.
Fifteen.
November twenty-fifteen.
Twenty-fifteen.
Yes.
And so, at the time, no one from Larkin Road showed up and said anything. I mean, there was no opposition, there was nothing.
Was there notification?
It was in notification.
They were at the Georgetown meeting. I'm from Georgetown. There were plenty of people from Larkin Road at the Georgetown meeting that day.
Right.
And both of us are hosting.
Okay, we didn't get any, anything here.
I think here's the problem. We, everyone here was surprised to see them nailing in the signs with the permanent, like, no one knew the development was happening, no one knew the culvert was happening. I mean, this is the kind of thing neighbors talk about. Nobody knew. Everyone was surprised.
Well, I think, well, I think what happened was a developer went under.
I know, it's changed redevelopment.
You know, we've read all the minutes. We are very, like, very informed, and what
we're wondering is, what are the next steps where we can influence things and that you can represent our safety concerns and what this really would mean to keep our citizens and our kids safe? So, I'm asking about process and how we can affect that, and thank you for your kind comments before.
So, I think when this road does, when this project does come before the Select Board, I think we've heard your, you know, intent in having that road closed tonight. I think we should be able to be prepared to speak to what that actually means, what that looks like, and what that would entail, if it's even feasible, even possible. So, I think that that would be where we would end up.
Quick question. Can I ask one question?
Yes.
You have to approach a microphone and state your name again, and we really need to.
David Maita, sixty-one Larkin Road. If the bridge is not repaired, can he still develop the property?
Yes, he would love that.
I, that I don't know.
It's in the Georgetown?
You need to be recognized, excuse me, you need to be recognized by the speaker and have the mic to speak.
That was the only question, I just didn't know if-
Yeah, there's no speaking from the audience.
Thank you.
So, I think, as far as, does my board have anything to say, anything else to say? I think when we, this comes before us, eventually it will, we can start discussing this all. But please, if you have any questions, send them to the town. We'll keep them in file, and we'll try to answer them as best we can when it comes before us again.
Especially technical questions, whose purview is what, so we don't give a false answer with good intentions. That way, the information's accurate.
I think that, for myself, I have to have answered, and Tracy, you might be able to enlighten me. What is going to be the responsibility, and it's a question that you might not be able to answer either, but what is gonna be the responsibility of the selectman? When it comes, I keep hearing it's gonna come to us, excuse me, for what?
The legal documentation to allow the work to be done on town property.
Okay. So, that's what we will do, and at that point, we're gonna have all the information from, is the Planning Board, and the Concom, are those the people that are putting together all the dynamics of this, or have they already been done by the engine? That's what I figured.
Okay. Has it been hard yet? You need to stand up. This is the last one.
I'm Nan McKenna, and I live sixteen Parish Road, and I'm on the Georgetown side. And so, I was wondering, and for Georgetown and also for Newbury, that they do have to widen, like, the street to, like, twenty-four feet if it is now a collector. I was looking on the internet to see what the street, so right now, it's called a cul-de-sac street because I think it's a dead-end street, and it's allowed to be twenty feet wide. So, are they going to have to widen the street to meet the bylaws of Newbury?
Larkin Road is not a cul-de-sac, and a bridge closing doesn't necessitate a change in that status, to my knowledge.
But it will be a collector's street, where they have to widen it to be by the bylaws of Newbury. It's supposed to be twenty-four feet.
We didn't have to widen Main Street. We have a narrow bridge on Boston Road. We have a narrow bridge on Orchard Street, very similar dimension situations. We've never had to widen a street by law to facilitate a repair.
If there's accidents where they don't, it doesn't matter, like, because it's like-
It's all planning board questions.
Nobody, like, I mean, you have to drive down there in a big car to see how, like, tight it is, yeah.
Loved here my whole life.
Yeah, we don't, I, we don't, this is, like, these are all new questions to us. We don't normally get these questions.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for listening.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, so, the report of the chair, I signed the PR twenty-one twenty-four for Julie O'Brien, the PR twenty-one twenty-five for Julie O'Brien, PR twenty-one twenty-five for the Select Board. This is, like, on the wire.
Just ignore it.
That's good, I won't bump you here.
You won't satisfy that.
All right.
I'll go towards yours.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, thank you.
Grants, gifts, and donations, I'll take them. We have some council on aging donations. Can I have a motion to accept Pauline Mahoney, twenty dollars?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another council on aging donation, these are all council on aging donations for Avril and Ray Merrick, five dollars. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Can we do them all at once?
Oh, I'm gonna do my time.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alan and Mary Fisk, four dollars.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michael Bareski, a hundred dollars.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Heidi and Steve Fram, seventy-five dollars.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moss Quinlan, twenty dollars, motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alba Goldthir, ten dollars, motion to accept.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearings, none. Under new business, we have a council on aging space needs report. That is going to be tabled till our July meeting. Town Council is currently reviewing the last council on aging meeting, and we will hear from them again in July. A liquor license for Sunset Club. Julie, everything's in order, correct?
Yes, this is one we've already approved, and this is just the ABCC's approval. We need to sign out, so just a minute.
Okay.
Motion to sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to plant a tree at the Lower Green in memory of Peter Hollis, Mr. Hollis. Julie, I think you have some pictures for us. Can you pass those out? Thank you. So, I believe Mr. Lamprey is here, the tree warden. Did you wanna speak to this, Tim?
I was approached by Peter Hollis's family about planting a tree somewhere in town, and then looking at the lower green, if you're looking at the lower green, you're going down Newman. There's two trees right there in the corner that are gonna have to come down. They're just, when the roads were dirt roads, it was fine. When nobody was putting salt down, it was fine. Those trees are not happy where they are, and they're gonna have to come down. So, looking at the green, if you go down Newman, then there's a little, call it a side street, that goes down towards where the school is. There's a spot right there that would be roughly thirty-five feet off of that little side road and fifty feet off of Newman, which would put the tree, which, when we had the Upper Green Committee, and the consensus seemed to be that, you know, native trees. The tree that they wanna plant is a red maple, not one that's the red leaf, but the maple that turns that bright, bright red in the fall. It's adaptable, it'll grow in wet soils, it'll grow in poor soils. It has a life expectancy somewhere between sixty and a hundred years. Height of it would be probably sixty feet, spread would be about forty feet. So, putting that tree in, offsetting both sides, it's, would be a nice addition to put in there. He had been tree warden of the town of Newbury for decades. I mean, I'm not even sure how many decades it was, but a long, long time. I also think it would be appropriate to put some kind of a plaque there with the planting of the tree, so that future generations would know that somebody had spent a lot of time taking care of the trees in the town of Newbury, and that would be a nice gesture on the part of the town to allow them to do that.
Thank you.
Questions?
One quick question.
Yep.
It's set into the, into the park, okay?
Yeah.
Is that gonna affect if kids wanted to play football or anything? I mean, I see kids playing on their green a lot.
Yeah, if you drew a line, it would bisect the, is it the old school building that's there? It would be about lined up halfway into where that building would be if you stood where the tree was gonna be and you looked. So, I think there's gonna be plenty of room.
Is this stake still in there?
Uh, no, it is not.
Okay.
No.
Oh, good.
That's not, this stake is not where the tree's gonna go in.
That's where, that's where you want it to go.
Yeah, this stake, this is what you want.
This stake here on the pitcher?
No, this one.
'Cause that's, Mike's got a good question. That was my thought, too. And especially the orchards and all the other things.
It would line up roughly like in here. The tree would be...
Is it in the center of the green?
It's not in the very center of it.
So, it's closer to the road?
It's closer to the road that's over here. There's a little, if you're coming down Newman, and then there's a little part of it's gravel, part of it's paved, that goes down back around, eventually comes out onto, yeah, it'll come back. One comes out onto one, swings around this way. So, it's on town property, like I said, fifty feet off of Newman.
Question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Looking at the photograph, wouldn't it make sense, given the, given the concern about impeding the kids using the field as a place to play, wouldn't it make more sense to have it, like, right here?
I know one, one issue that's come up over the years is historically, as the roads have gotten busier and vehicles have become heavier, we found the trees are too close to the road to really preserve their health. So, the general thought over the last few years is to slowly stop bringing them in as we replant them, rather than dropping them right in the same line to get killed again.
Yeah, that was, on the Upper Green, that was one of the-
You were thinking over here, Jerry.
How far off the road did you say it was, Tim, fifty feet? Fifty feet off of Newman.
That's probably about fifteen feet farther than this room is long, just to put it in perspective for everybody.
Is it gonna stand alone, like a lone tree in the green?
No, this, you have a bunch of pines that are closer to one A. Some of those may be state trees because of the closeness to the road, but the ones that are along Newman Road, all of them have some kind of an issue with root system damage and whatever from the paving of the road.
Like this one, you mean, like this one here?
Yeah, that one, it's getting worse all the time.
What, what, Alyssa?
This one.
As they mature, the roots creep towards the road, and they start picking up salt and the compaction of the vehicles.
Yeah.
Do we wanna go out and take a look at this?
I would, I would make, I would like to see it before we sit, I love the idea we're putting a tree up for Peter. I mean, he gave us many good years.
Yeah, I can mark it with something that's a little more permanent. It was just one of those things where I was running out to look at some trees that people had questions on, and I was gonna be down that way, and I said, well, okay, I'll just grab something and, and mark it. So, I can do that. I can put a marker back in there.
When you do, let us know, and we'll all make it a point to get right out there and take a look before the marker gets moved or disappears or they get them all.
I think it's a good idea because, you know, this is kinda setting a precedent. If we start to put the trees, you know, if we start to plant more trees, and that's gonna kind of be how far in, and JR had a good point, it seems like fifty feet, so, you know, it's like eighteen yards or whatever. So, but it would be nice to really see how that is going to, how the new trees, if they start to come in a line, are gonna impact, maybe, you know, the fields itself. And what's the historic nature of those fields? Are we getting any trouble starting to put trees into the training fields or the farm fields or whatever?
Good point.
Do you think the historical commission would wanna weigh in on this?
Well, there was a tree that was, I'm gonna say, fifteen feet closer to that little side road that was taken down. There's a stump there now from a tree that had to be cut down. And to me, the concern is, is that if we plant things too much closer to the road, then it's just gonna be another tree that's gonna have to be cut down. I mean, that's really the whole issue with a lot of the trees in town, that when we had dirt roads and the trees could get water and, you know, nobody was worried about getting out, and, you know, so, roads would be plowed, but they probably weren't sanded or salted. And it's the salt that's been the issue for so many trees, and it's just, one right after another that you look, you know, pick a street in town, you can go and look. I mean, you know, we talked about Larkin Road. There's probably been easily twenty trees over the last four and a half, going on five years that I've been tree warden, that literally had to come down because they were falling down. So, it's just, if we're gonna plant stuff, I think it behooves us to move stuff in a little bit closer. The fact that Peter lived on Cottage Road made sense to me that, you know, putting it on the Upper Green would be the, I mean, excuse me, the Lower Green would be the right place for it to go.
And if it was going to be an alternative, would we move it closer to the dirt road that provides access to the schoolhouse?
Yeah.
Okay.
You just, I looked at it and said, okay, the, the normal width on a red maple is probably forty feet. So, if you take and go thirty-five feet, then there's room for the tree, figuring, okay, half the branches grow on one side, half of another. So, if a tree's gonna go that far, if it's thirty-five feet off that road, the tree's gonna expand out to twenty, leave a little extra room so that at some point in time, we're not having branches hanging down over the road. And it is a tree that would provide some good shade in that area.
And I think, Alyssa, just check with the historical commission for sure.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Tim.
It's a nice-
Thank you, Tim. Will you let us know when it's-
Yeah, I think I can get out tomorrow and mark it, so.
Awesome, thanks, Tim.
JR, you wanna say something?
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice gesture. Peter Hollis was tree warden, especially in a time where there weren't a lot of funds to work with, and he had to be creative at times, and it's a, it's a nice gesture.
I agree with JR. I watched Peter a lot in the pot of trees and hanging around the road.
He was, he was amazing. So, yes, absolutely, I mean, he cared about the trees.
He did.
Immensely.
All right, so I move that we table this to our next meeting in July.
A second, a second, yeah, a second.
Sounds good.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Tim.
Next, we have a business license, personal Pilates Plus, DBA, Michelle Wheeler, one B Hanover Street, General Business Fitness.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business license for Alana Matzys, L. Matzys, Dunn, DBA Flipping Out Enterprises, one oh-nine High Road, is a coach consultant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Request for public property use, Peter Johnson, Lower Green Wedding Ceremony. Request for public property use, Peter Johnson, Lower Green Wedding Ceremony.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Is this something we usually do because they want to use it for a wedding? And will they be assuming all of the cost?
I had the same question. Everything like that.
Everything that goes along with the typical request for public property use will go along with this.
They have their federal insurance, they have to run out, and it's been signed up by the police and the fire. So they follow through the physical access.
And if they have to have a police officer, they they pay for his detail?
Oh, yeah.
The Johnsons just said, this picture here, they lived in this house. That's why it's, that's why it's important to them to have the wedding down there. The family lived there for thirty, forty years. Thirty, I think. I went to school with Colby.
Yeah, they only wanted it for an hour. They're going to get married on the green. It's going to be nice.
I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
Sounds lovely.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Entertainment application, Larry Cushion for Plum Island Airport Summer Fest Event Amusement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I think it's Larry here?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, Peter.
Come on.
You want to come up and talk us, tell, tell us about this event?
Just in in a nutshell.
Come on up.
It's free advertising.
It's free advertising, you're on cable TV?
Yes, we're looking to get a permit to, like a festival down at the Plum Island Airport on the Newbury side, and I guess it's going to be a little bit on the Newbury port side. Looking to bring like a small festival, some like family rides and games and stuff and.
Oh, like a carnival?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
So, yeah, try to make it an annual event. We do probably about twenty-five to thirty Massachusetts event every year, some, you know, from, all the way down from like Marble's Vineyard, Marblehead, Hanover, a lot of events that have gone on for thirty, forty years and just kind of, you know, COVID and everything, looking to expand into different areas, so.
What was the date of the event again?
Three, it's three day, two day.
Come in July?
Yes.
Looks like you have good references, and you're welcome back to the communities you visit, so that's a good sign.
Definitely.
Okay. Yeah, July 30th to August 1st.
Anything in order, Joe?
Yes.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to recuse for, no, not yet.
Okay, so now we have a liquor license for Byfield Community Arts Center, Cat in the Cradle Coffee House, July 23rd, seven to ten. Why don't we take these two together? July 23rd and July 24th, seven to 10:00 PM. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I will recuse.
Wow. It's a vintage.
Yeah, we have some, the vintage baseball at the one-day liquor license for Mercury Brewing Company, Spencer Pierce Little Farm. I'm just going to rattle off the dates. Does we have any, does anybody want, I'll just rattle off the dates. If you want to hold on any, just yell "hold," and then we'll come back to it.
Good idea.
July 11th, 2021, July 18th, 2021, July 25th, 2021, August 1st, 2021, August 7th, 2021, August 15th, 2021, August 29th, 2021, September 12th, 2021, September 19th, 2021, October 3rd, 2021, October 19th, 2021.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you can come back, JR.
JR, don't go home.
Don't go home.
Next, we have a request for public property use.
Sweet pause, did that matter, that it was a different event? That's all I was just going to ask.
Sweet pause? I don't see that.
They're all the vintage baseball, no, there's a sweet pause, best it's the last one.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Sweet pause. No, it was the date was okay.
Oh.
Thank you, Julie. So we have a request for public property use for Steve Fram, Central Street, Byfield Auto Cruise Night. Steve, do you want to talk a little bit about this? Talk it up.
Steve Fram, 21 Florence Street. Same thing we've done for the last fourteen years. Hopefully, we'll make it fifteen. One thing I did do different this year was I put in for a rain date because we've lost either two or three over the years. Now, the guys give me hell because they can't come back, so. But it's a good night. A lot of people come out to see the cars. A lot of cars show up. It's just a good time.
Is it something you need to preregister for, or could somebody interested in being in the lineup just show up?
Just show up.
Oh, really?
It's real low-key. We have music. We either have a DJ or we've had, we've had a live band a couple times, and.
Real going.
Everybody likes it.
It's a good time.
It's just a good time.
I see your date here is July 30th, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. What's your rain date?
I think it was on there, it was August 13th. I thought I put it on there.
No, it's okay.
I don't see one, but we'll.
August 13th.
We'll put that down as the rain date.
Yeah. Okay, so in 2019, when you came before the board for this, we we waived the umbrella policy, and we requested that the.
We get them to sign a waiver.
Yes, yeah. You remember you coming in with a stack of them, right? Yeah.
I'm going to do it different this year, though. I'm going to make it a list. You know, there's no sense in having a stack of fifty pieces of paper or a hundred pieces of paper in your file when you can do it with three or four pieces of paper and just a list, as long as you get the name, the registration number, their address.
Yeah, they have to sign this form.
That doesn't.
And their signature.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have the, we'll have the waiver liability statement at the top of that page.
Well, let's, let's make sure that that's okay. We'll, we'll ask town council about that.
In the meantime, we can check with the insurance company and just make sure that that doesn't bother me, but as long as it's.
They're the ones that suggested it to me.
Okay, well, that helps.
You know, Steve, we do something different, it makes us itchy.
I've had this rash. I wasn't sure what it was. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve Byfield Cruise Night and the potential rain date.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now we have appointments.
I'm going to, I'm going to recuse from agricultural commission.
Okay, so what I am going to do is go through these one at a time and one person at a time. Okay, so for the agricultural commission, they're a three-year term. Eva Jackman, can I get a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Lisa Colby?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, JR. Now, we're going to do the capital planning committee. This is a two-year term.
Were the letters on the capital planning committee, were the letters sent in to the people that they wanted this position?
Everybody agreed. Everybody that's on this list has agreed.
Has not, they've sent a letter in?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody here has sent in requesting?
Okay. I just don't know some of the names.
Yes, and there was a couple people that sent in things late. They're missing, so those are, they're coming on here, too. So for the capital planning, we have Nicholas Orm. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stuart Muir, motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's capital planning. Conservation commission, we have, these are three-year terms. Dan Streeter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mary Remmer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Frank Wettenkamp.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brad Duffin.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging. Now, this is at town meeting this year, we, we had a staggered, we have passed a new bylaw, so we have a staggered terms on these. This is new, so I have Geraldine Door.
Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Geraldine Door, 7/21, 7/1, 2021 through 6/30, 2023. It's a two-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I noticed that most of the members, the present members, are here, and we're reappointing them, but Evelyn Noiz's name is is not here. Is that an oversight?
No, it's not an oversight. That's not here. And actually, there's Chuck Baer sent in his name, and that should be included on this one, too.
Okay, may I inquire why Evelyn Noiz is not included?
She's not, she's not in the, on the appointment list. Do you want to make a motion to include her?
I would.
I would, too.
Okay, okay, so.
I know she's, I asked her why her name wasn't here, and she was, I believe she told me it was an oversight. I don't know if.
Okay, so let's, let's finish this one first, and then we'll, we'll add that. So Geraldine Door, we have a motion and a second. Julie, correct?
Yes.
Yes, Jay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would, I would move to include Evelyn Noiz's name to have a three-year term.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? Yes, I'm opposed. JR, are you opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed, Jeff?
May I inquire? May I inquire what the reason is to oppose that? One particular person?
I'm looking.
Is it because she made an amendment last night, and it doesn't fit with some people?
No, because this, this is, this agenda came out, this agenda came out on Thursday, before the meeting.
I think it's a huge mistake not, not putting her back on the board. She's a, she's a good worker. She's complete with, and she does a good job with the, with the elderly.
Okay.
And I would suggest it's probably like the media committee, whose position was not accepted, so they, they did not get reappointed. And you were even the representative, Alicia, so I think it's shameful.
That was the media committee. Your husband was appointed to that committee, he never took his appointment. Okay, so Joyce Macheros, 7/21 to 6/30, 24. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed. Excuse me, I'm, it's nothing personal, but I won't be opposing all of the boards because this isn't right to exclude someone like that when the person wants to serve.
I was, I was, I say the same thing.
Okay, so we have three yeses, and we have one opposed. Mike, are you going to vote?
I'm, I'll, I'll agree with Jerry on this one, no.
Okay. Next, we have Janine Cunningham, 7/1, 21 to 6/30, 22. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept. No second?
No second? Motion, that fails. Okay, William DiMeo, 7/1, 21 to 6/30, 24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
He passes. Damon Jaspersen, 7/1, 21 to 6/30, 22.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question.
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion. It's like Damon's like really young for this committee. I was just wondering what is, what he wants to bring to the committee other than a vote?
I think some diversity is good for this committee.
Yes, I'm looking for to, to put some fresh air into this committee, diverse committee, diverse in age, diverse in gender.
And he'll vote the way you want him to vote.
And vote, exactly.
I, I don't.
Damon's got quite a strong personality. He doesn't do what anyone necessarily wants him to do.
Not really. You know him well. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
No, opposed.
Okay. Carol Rice, 7/1, 21 to 6/30, 23. Do I have a motion? That fails. Chuck Baer, this is going to be a two-year term from 7/1, 21.
Excuse me, may I object? I object to the procedure. His name isn't even on this list, and now we're going to put him through, and we're dropping somebody off. The procedure is not the correct procedure.
Chuck Baer's name was.
What's the term for Chuck Baer?
Two-year term.
The dates?
7/1, 21 to 6/30, 23.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, two. Okay, next, we have the cultural council. It's a three-year term, seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty four. Margaret Russell, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lloyd Hamovit, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marguerite Flanagan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Do I, do you want me to leave the room for this? Next one, don't you guys just not vote?
No, 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 you don't have to recuse. So Eastern Essex, one term, seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty two. Mike, do you want to still sit on this?
Yes, I do. I really enjoy this.
Okay.
So, I appreciate you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Executive Administrator to the Select Board, one year, Julie O'Brien, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, any discussion? All in favor? Finance Committee, Joseph Ali, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Frank Visconti?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, sorry. Yep.
I talked to Frank last year and he said he didn't want to be back on the board, so did he have a change of hat?
He sent a letter in.
Okay, because, because when I talked to him last fall, last spring, he said, they want me back. I don't think I want to go back on that. So, this, I'll, I'll, I'll go down and talk to him. See, may I have a change of hat?
Yeah, well, he sent, he sent a letter.
He emailed saying he desired to serve.
All right, so.
Excuse me, on discussion? Yes.
Could, could we just, for the people who are listening, tell them what the procedure is if they're interested in serving on any boards? Because a few years ago, people, the board said we didn't have enough volunteers. Now, suddenly, we have all these volunteers. What is the procedure if anybody in the audience or on, at home watching is interested in serving in a committee?
Let, let's finish this vote and then we'll get to that. So Frank Visconti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to go through all these appointments and then we'll talk about, about how to do this. Historical Commission, three-year term, seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty four. Nancy Thurlow is an associate member.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Juan Hackmeister?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rebecca Fuller?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Rich Morin?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Merrimack Valley Planning, one year, seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty two. Martha Taylor is the Commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lawrence Murphy, alternate Commissioner?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Municipal Vulnerability Task Force, it's a one-year term. Tracy Blaze?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
What, what exactly does this committee do, this task force? Jeff?
Jeff's on it. You want to go, Jeff?
Tracy, I don't know what the charter says are, you know, but we're the folks that was involved in putting together the study for Plum Island just came out. I believe this is initiative from Lieutenant, Lieutenant Governor Polito. And it addresses a lot of the things that are going to happen with climate change. It can go down through electricity in buildings. You know, I didn't, wasn't it the municipal that was for more insulation or whatever in our building, so?
We, we did the Visioning Day and we had the community awareness down at the Refuge. Not the Refuge, the.
No, you were at the Refuge building.
It was the Refuge building.
Absolutely.
This is the task force that's put in place that really applies for all of the grant funding for any of these initiatives. We recently did the Plum Island analysis.
And it's so important right now because the Massachusetts Bond Bill is just huge amounts of money and this is the ability and to be able to access some of that money. So, it's really important.
Is it too late to put my name under the, under the Commissioner's list?
Shouldn't they? They did it, Chuck.
No, yeah. And you did it with everyone?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, so I, I would like, I would like to be on this, I'd like to be on this, knowing more about it. It's okay.
She was deleted.
This, I mean, the biggest thing that comes from this Municipal Vulnerability Task Force is that it sets us up to get grant money from the bond bill that the, that the state has. I mean, you have to, I mean, there's a huge, I don't know how many billions of dollars is in that. But, you know, and we're being a coastal community and we need to tap into that.
And this is a fairly new concept, is it not?
Yes.
Three years, I think, we've been, yeah.
So, could I maybe add it to the list?
I don't know. What is the parameters of this task force?
There, there aren't any.
Okay. So, let's start, so Tracy Blaze, so we are, let's go down the, here and then we'll, we'll add Mike in. So, I guess we need to, we need a vote for Tracy?
We did Jay and Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kristen Grubbs?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Doug Janvren?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Peter Burnett?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
John O'Connell?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Kara Campbell?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Deborah Rogers?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
James Surratt?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Martha Taylor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jeff Walker?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Jerry, do you want to make that motion for Mike?
I'd move to include Mike Doyle.
Second? If I could second myself, I don't know if I can or not. Can I?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Newbury Improvement Trust Fund trustees. Lynn Kettleson?
Motion to approve.
Seven, she's going to be one, that's okay. He's going to be a one-year term, seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty two. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Sleep, sleep. I was thinking, what's, what's the definition of the Improvement Trust Fund?
Okay. Tracy?
Well, we didn't know much about it. Actually, Mrs. Rogers had contacted us to ask about the balances in the Newbury Improvement Trust Fund. So, Eileen did some research, jumped back and was able to find some documents. It was voted at a town meeting, so action was taken at a town meeting. And there was, the majority of the discussion at the town meeting was focused on the, the donation of land to build the Council on Aging, which was subsequently turned down. So, there was funding, contributions were made to this trust fund. It was a legal document, a legal trust document that was written by Vali Tony Pansky. And there were three people who were appointed to be the trustees of this fund. What Eileen was able to come up with, and it wasn't very clear in the beginning, but she's been able to kind of put the puzzle pieces together, is there's a little, there's a balance of a little bit over $4,000. What we don't have is what the individual contributions were, so who donated what individual amount. I think it was, we look back in, oh, five, that's still, two thousand and six, is that? Does that sound right?
Yes.
When it was in two thousand and six. So, those funds are still there. They are available. The original trustees, two of them are deceased. Ben Armstrong was the other trustee who did express interest in, in staying on, but needed to get confirmation from his work.
His employer.
Yeah.
So, he's on here to be appointed for a three-year term. He heard, he heard back from his employer that he works for mutual fund. He had to be granted approval to sit on a trust. He's the one that has the historical knowledge of it all because he was one of the original ones, so.
Who's, what's his name again?
Ben Armstrong.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, I was very happy that he was sitting, willing to sit on this trust again.
So, where's the money supposed to go? I'm missing a vote here. Where's the, what's the, what are they supposed to do with the money?
Originally, the, it, it looks like the initial contributions were for.
The Council on Aging? I don't know the exact name. Correct me if I'm wrong, Barbara, but Dick Cunningham offered a posse for a potential Council on Aging.
Yeah.
Well, that has nothing to do with the trust.
Right.
Really, but yes, he did.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know if the, if the intention was that it would go towards that potential project, but.
Is, is Town Council looking into this at all as far as like?
So, we have deducted the trust.
Okay, okay.
So, in order to put any money into this trust or take any money out of the trust, the trust has to have trustees. They approve transactions, which is why we're appointing trustees. So.
It talked, it also talked about capital, you know, improvements and that. It was pretty general.
Yeah.
It could be utilized for.
Celebrations, I think, was one of them. So Lynn Kettleson, can I?
Second, you, you, motion to approve? All right, yeah, that's, yeah.
So, we're done with discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mary Larry, seven, for a two-year term, seven twenty one to six thirty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Ben Armstrong for a three-year term, seven twenty one to six thirty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Open Space Committee, one-year term. Martha Taylor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. McDonough, McDonough Scanlon?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Julie Marion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mike Carbone?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Planning Board Associate Member, a one-year term. Mary Stone?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Recreation Committee is a one-year term. David Brol.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David Dempsey?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Celine Muldowney?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Mark Sant?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Michael Volpon?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Alicia Greco is a Select Board Rep, the liaison to non-voting member.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cindy Courier is the Council on Aging Rep?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have discussion.
Yes.
Why, why would there be a Council of Aging representative on the, on this committee?
Because they're, they're charged. Hold on, let me get it right here.
I mean, I think it's a great idea because when you mix the, the, the young people with the older people.
Right.
And.
It's very healthy. When the charge for the Rec Committee was put together. Just let me get it. Here it is. So, membership in terms, the Newbury Recreation Committee shall consist of the following members. No more than seven at-large members. One at-large member position will be set aside for a rising Newbury High School junior or senior for a one-year term. And a liaison to the Board of Selectment is a non-voting member. There's also the Chairman of the Open Space Committee or a designee and the Director of the Newbury Council on Aging. So, this is to try to put together a, a well-rounded committee. And the, once the Open Space Committee forms, they're being reactivated, they haven't been active in a while, they will, either the Chair will take that appointment. We'll, we'll be doing a couple more appointments as the summer goes on. But thank you for asking. Okay. Cindy Courier, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Lucian Denzmore?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, we have two special municipal employee consultants to the town, one-year terms each. Tom Hughes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
What exactly are they consulting?
Tom Hughes is a wetlands consultant and Tim Meehan is an engineer. Basically, we turn to with different needs in the fields as they arise.
Like for the planning board and stuff?
This is a paid position?
Yes. Not, well, not salary.
It's not a salary position.
Is it hourly? Is it, how, how do they get paid?
They present proposals.
Contract, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Tom Hughes is very well-known in the, especially coastal waters.
Didn't we met him, meet him down on the island when we did that one?
On the emergency, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And he's been a part of the MRBA forever.
Yeah.
Okay, that's discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Timothy Meehan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Veterans Grave Officer. Bill DeMayo, going to be a three-year term from seven one twenty one to six thirty twenty four.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Veteran Service Agent, it's a three-year term, Karen Tyler?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals. Mario Carnavale's going to move up from an associate member to a three-year term, seven twenty-one to six thirty. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jack Kelly is going to be an associate member for one term, seven twenty-one to seven twenty-two, for one-year term rather. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now we have Police Department. Actually, before we go to the Police Department, I'm going to go back to Jerry's question about how we get boards and committees. The town has a website. And on the website, under volunteers, a button on the, on the right hand, the left-hand side, that says, um, job opportunities and volunteer positions. If you click on that and go down there, it'll tell you what boards and committees of ours have open seats. And all you have to do is submit a letter to the Select Board and, um, when we have an open seat.
So, are the letters, these people already submitted, available to us?
Um, are they, I think Julie has them.
Yeah, I have them, I have a bio.
Alright, so I may, yes, this is a few of them, okay, okay, thank you.
We have one, we'll provide them.
Um, okay, and so now we're going to appoint police, the Police Department, these are all one-year terms. Um, I'm, I have a question. Yes.
The Police Department, since we have the Chief here, what's the difference between a special versus a reserve patrolman?
A special would be assigned to special assignments, like, uh, filling in for details, roadside details that we can't fill with our staffing. Uh, they, they don't do any patrols or any such things like that, it's just special assignments.
Okay, and the reserve?
Reserve Police Officer does do patrols, uh, all police powers and patrol power, filling in open shifts and open, openings in our schedule like that, uh, that we need to.
Okay, so they're both, both of those position, types of positions are, when you need extra, extra manpower, basically?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and there are also two more that we're missing from this, um, this list. Martha Leahy as an appointment, she is the Administrative Assistant, but she's also going to be appointed as a Chaplain. And Peter Forgeoni is a Reserve Police Patrolman as well, those two were accidentally left off.
What's Peter's last name?
Forgeoni?
Correct.
I'm Italian, I can say that word. Um, okay, so.
Chief, so real quickly, there was a police officer, I can't think of his name, on Riverview Drive that retired.
Mike Neary.
Mike, it's like, is he not on anymore?
He is not, he is fully retired.
Has he?
Yep, I talked to Mike Cathy a few days ago and he's doing very, very well.
Good, I guess he was a good, he was a good friend.
Yeah.
I just pulled a blank on the name.
So, um, John Baker is a Reserve Police Patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Charles Colby, Junior Reserve Police Patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No relation, just a veritable.
Brad DiChenzo? DiChenzo, Reserve Police Patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nathan Hunter, Reserve Police Patrolman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carol LaRocque, Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Martha Leahy as an Administrative Assistant?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michael Mailhart, Reserve Police Patrolman?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roger Murray, Special Police Officer?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. James Malonis, Reserve Police Patrolman?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Christopher Walsh, Special Police Officer for Triton?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reed Wilson, the Assistant Animal Control Officer?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I have two more here that missed, that missed this deadline like the other ones. Martha Leahy is the Chaplain, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Peter Forgeoni, the Reserve Police Patrolman, um, can I get a, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we did it. Now we have a Town Administrator Report.
Thank you. Um, our, everybody's pretty much aware now that, uh, the fifteen, the governor has lifted the state of emergency and, uh, we've been able to manage a pretty orderly, uh, transition back from those emergency measures to our normal operations. It wasn't without a couple of hiccups, some of the, uh, public hearings that were previously noticed, uh, to be occurring via Zoom, had to be opened and then continued. So there've been a couple of little issues that have come up, but, uh, the board and committee chairs have worked with Town Council to, um, thank you, sorry, have worked with Town Council to remedy all those issues. The Conservation Agent position has been filled. Kara Campbell joined our team on June fourteenth. She comes to us with a lot of coastal experience, she worked both in Winthrop and in Hampton, New Hampshire. So, uh, glad to have her on board and.
Both those towns are an easy town.
No, they aren't, no, they aren't, so, um, really glad to have her on board. And Bill Holt, I just wanted to say a, a thank you to him because he's been really great in assisting us throughout the transition. He's kind of held on and worked on Fridays to keep things moving, so, really appreciate that. We, uh, were notified today of a coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, uh, grant award. Newbury is going to be receiving seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars. Um, and I will need a vote of the board to accept that grant.
Motion to accept.
Excuse me, what's it, what is it to be used for?
It is to be used for, um, responding to all of the COVID-19 impacts in our community. It's about a hundred and fifty-page document. And, uh, there's going to be a number of training sessions over the next couple of months for, um, the Finance Department staff to understand what exactly will qualify. But, um, it's pretty comprehensive.
Is it revenue replacement?
It's revenue replacement, is going to be allowed, but DOR is just working on providing us with the template. So, i- it's going to be, you know, we can't just say, oh, we, we thought we were going to get a million dollars in motor vehicle excise, we only got nine hundred thousand, so we want a hundred thousand. They're, they're putting together templates, we're going to have to demonstrate, you know, year-over-year data to prove to them that there was a true reduction in revenues.
Would this pay for some of the costs of the nurses we had doing calls?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
All of our COVID-related expenses will be covered.
Having been there, those nurses were amazing.
Yeah, they've been tremendous, they're still on board.
Yeah, I know.
They're still on board.
Like I said, it's really good.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, um, I'll have a motion to accept the grant?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're also, um, just wanted to put it on your radar, it is time to update our beach management plan. It's, uh, about twelve years old now. A number of things have come up that are, are pretty outdated in the document, so, um, I'm going to look to work, to engage GZA. Most of the work will be with the Conservation Commission, most of, most of the work that they do. But that's, that's something that's, that's been on our radar for a while that we really need to, uh, make some progress on, so. That's a priority. Plum Island Bathroom Project continues to move through process, presented to the Conservation Commission. They suggested, uh, a couple of changes which the architect is working on with the Conservation Agent to, uh, improve upon. I think I reported to you before, but just not in case, uh, the Lock and Mill Dam Removal Grant was submitted on May eighteenth. So we're waiting, um, we're waiting to hear whether or not we're, um, going to receive funding for that.
Tracy, can you remember where that went ultimately? That might, you might not have known where that went, but I was just curious. Did it go to FEMA, where did it go? Did it go to NOAA? Yeah.
Um, it was a state grant.
States, good.
State grant funds. Um, Newbury Grange Hall, the DPW Director has reported that the Roof Joyce Project is, is now complete. So that work has been done. Uh, we also have plans in place to update the handicapped access this season, uh, replace the furnace. And we were notified by the BCAC that the floors also need to be refinished in that building. So that's not on the schedule yet, but that's going to be, we're going to see if we can get that done this season as well. You're, I think everybody's aware that the BCAC lease is expiring on June thirtieth. They've expressed interest in renewing or continuing their relationship with the town.